Hello and welcome to the City of Cedar Falls Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for January 8th, 2025. I call this meeting to order. Could I get a roll call, please?
Albert Hasky.
Here.
Gribovich.
Here.
Hartley.
Here.
Henderson.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Moser.
Here.
Sorensen.
Here.
Stahlnecker.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Thank you. All present.
All right. Thank you. Looking for approval or a discussion on minutes?
I saw a move to approve minutes from last meeting.
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, all right, that will go into record. This is the time of the meeting for any public comment for anything that is not on the agenda tonight. I don't see anyone, so we will move on to old business. Our first order of old business is rezoning to amend a frontage designation on the downtown character district regulating plan from the neighborhood small to an urban general two. And JD has this tonight. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. This is a case for rezoning to amend the downtown character district regulating plan to change the designation from neighborhood small to urban general two. The location map on your screen shares two red stars, which is where this amendment will be taken place if it is approved. Just a background, the Imagine Downtown Vision Plan was adopted in 2019 November and as part of integral part of the City of Cedar Falls Comprehensive Plan. And following the vision plan adoption, downtown character district zoning code and a downtown character district regulating plan were adopted in late 21 and is currently the zoning map. The map that you see on your screen is currently the zoning map for this area. And also, it was included in your packet for further reference. So the current zoning, what we're discussing here is urban general two extending out in neighborhood small. Urban general two is a frontage designation that is intended for street oriented downtown, downtown type multi-story building and allows commercial, residential, institutional, or mixed-use buildings. Whereas neighborhood small designation is intended for residential uses, including the detached and attached houses, including up to smaller apartments. Based on the vision plan, this area was termed as a western gateway to the downtown core area, which is further east, and a gateway entrance to the city. And it was intended that this corridor be developed with mixed uses in order to serve as a gateway to the core downtown area. The current zoning has standard about neighborhoods at back manners. I'm giving an example here. If the lot depth of this lots fronting West First Street is 50 to 52 feet on an average, and then considering the front building setbacks as shown on the red line, red dotted line, and neighborhood setback banners, which is essentially a 20-feet building setback from the neighborhood small area, limits the potential development on this lot or the narrower depth lots. These two lots are 50 to 52 feet wide, and this would restrict the development of these lots. And also, other requirements like placing a four to eight feet high of masonry wall and tree placement on that edge makes it a bit of challenge for anyone to develop these lots, which is why the petition here is to propose or extend the urban general two designation by replacing the two neighborhood small areas on Olive and Walnut Street. As you can see, this is the map that you see on your screen. You may see the area to the east of what we are discussing has at least two-thirds of those block being designated as urban general two, which makes it more, which makes it more development friendly on those sites. But if you see the smaller areas that is being currently being proposed to rezone, it would make more sense if half the block would extend out. Again, if allowed or if approved, this rezoning will allow more flexibility on the for development on these lots and will also allow development of street-oriented residential and mixed-use building as per the intent of the vision plan. One thing I would want to note that it doesn't change anything for the areas to the south of this district boundary. These will all remain residential and the use is not going to change or they're, like, no other thing is going to change except for this designation here. The existing property will continue to be used as residential use unless it's redeveloped. So, yeah, there are no disadvantages to this, but it would be more, the extension of urban general two will be more consistent with the other areas to the east, as you see. With that, staff recommends approval of the proposed rezoning request to amend the regulating plan to extend the urban general two frontage on Olive and Walnut Street, subject to any comments and direction specified by Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm here to answer any questions, as well as the applicant is here. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, JD. Is there any questions for staff at this point?
I think I have one. And I know this is only for the rezoning, not for any sort of plating or anything like that or proposed, but I believe we saw the intention was to be the multi-story. And I believe in between, there's kind of two parts of the lot, right? And I think there's an alleyway going through the middle. Is that correct? If a building was to be built, is it not allowed to be on the alley? Or would it take over? How does that work? Am I making sense on the question?
Yeah. So, is your question about where they would access the building if the building was?
Well, can you build kind of over the alley?
Oh, no, no.
So the alley would have to remain?
Yes.
That's the place. That's all I want to know. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions? Does the applicant here tonight like to speak to this item at all?
Hello. My name is Mark Ludwig. I am the applicant and appreciate your consideration. I really don't have anything to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Okay. I don't know at this point, but if we do, you're available. I appreciate that.
Very good.
So, thank you. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this? Please come to the microphone and name an address for the record, please.
Oh, sorry.
You can pull that down.
Thank you. My name is Christine Fisher, and I actually live at 116 Olive. So, you asked one question, and I talked to Mr. Ludwig earlier today, and he did answer most of my questions. I guess my understanding is he bought just the one lot on the one side of the alley, not that the, does the city still own the other lot? Or did he buy both of them? Because on the county website, it still lists the other lot as owned by the city of Cedar Falls.
The city owns that lot.
Does the city have any plans for that lot?
I can't speak to that at the moment. That's, I don't, I don't have an answer for that, whether we have plans or not. We don't have any plans at the moment for that lot.
Okay. I guess, you know, like I said, I've talked to Mr. Ludwig, and I don't have anything against his plans. My concern, and I talked to him about that, was parking, but he said parking was part of the building. So I guess I'm just raising those questions of what is the plan for the rest of that area. And my big question is, I noticed in the letter I got, it talked about the city then requesting a change for a couple of pieces of property, including the one next to me from residential to general use two, or general two use. And I just am questioning, why was that done?
So maybe it would help to show that?
Diagram.
The diagram, the first diagram, JD, that shows the two blocks there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
So, the request was made for the one on Walnut Street, but as I mentioned, that the lot depth along those, the two narrower lots along West First Street are only 50 feet wide. And if they were to redevelop, considering the building setbacks from the First Street, as well as the neighborhood setback manner from the south lot line, then that just lives a probably 20, 20-ish feet for someone to develop those lots. So.
I guess my question is more that, the blue lot, the one that's the blue on the Olive, because that's a house, and I guess, why does that need to get changed? Because it doesn't seem to have any effect on what Mr. Ludwig's planning to do.
I think the reason is the same principle applies to both of those streets. The idea that changing the regulating plan for both of those to extend it to that boundary will allow the lots along First Street to redevelop in a manner that's consistent with the vision plan. So if they're not both changed, it leaves this little remnant piece to the west that leaves that block undevelopable, basically, along First Street. Because of the neighborhood manor setback is too great to allow the lot along First Street to redevelop. That's the issue, is the neighborhood manor setback, not that the lot that's residential there would necessarily redevelop. And I know it's a little hard to explain this principle, but the neighborhood, if it's shifted to the south, the residential property that's to the south there, is that your property?
Not the blue one, the one next to it.
Okay. So that, that property itself, then, that neighborhood manor's setback shifts to that property. So the property that's next to yours will now have that neighborhood manor setback. So it will be difficult to develop or change the residential building on the lot south, or just to the north of you, to redevelop. But it will allow the lots along First Street to redevelop. So we're not intending to kind of encroach into, farther into the neighborhood, but yet, to allow the, just the lots along First Street to redevelop.
You explained that well, but my concern is, is, you're right, I guess I don't want businesses there. I don't want to live next to a business. But my other concern is, and I've written my local person over a year ago, when I realized that the city then owned these lots, and asked or suggested that I thought it would be a good idea to turn them into a bus stop. Because at this point, the bus comes down First Street and actually turns onto Walnut, right there at that corner. And the bus nearest bus stop is just a bench up on First Street. And I, like I said, it's a small lot. I'm not sure what could be done with it, but I think it would be a nice idea and a benefit to the city if the city would consider turning that into a bus stop with a shelter. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public like to speak to this item? All right. I will bring this back to commission. It's pretty straightforward. I understand the purpose and can get behind this without a problem.
Yeah, I would say, I would say the same. It seems a little odd to have those tiny little parcels up there that you really can't do anything with.
Any other comment or discussion? Motion?
I would make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Do we need a roll call vote on this one?
Yes. Albert Hasky?
Aye.
Gribovich?
Aye.
Hartley?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Sorensen?
Aye.
Stahlnecker?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Moving on to the third item on today's agenda, old business is rezoning of 2.68 acres located south of First Street and 350 feet east of Winding Ridge Estates, from A1 agriculture to RP planned residence. And this is going to be Tom tonight. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissions. You've seen this a few times in the past. I will go over the request for the rezoning and then go ahead and discuss the RP master plan that is part of what's required for rezoning. And then we can make, go with discussions from there. Okay, so the site is up off of West First Street. It's part of a current tract, approximately 2.6 acres that they're requesting to rezone RP, and then eventually those lots, that lot will be combined with the other RP, and then there will be development. The limitations right now is that this site doesn't have any road access, and then there's the utilities aren't there. So one of the conditions would be that this property, that they do a subdivision of the property to combine them, as well as provide an easement for the continuation of Lake Ridge Drive down to the property line at the south. And then that easement will be dedicated, and then that will go through as part of the subdivision when they start the subdivision. And this can't go forward until that portion is done. It won't be able to go forward to City Council for the rezoning. And then the second part is the RP master plan amendment. And I've got the two images here. The one on the left was the one that you had previously reviewed. The one on the right is the resubmital from the applicants. They're reducing the number of units from one, from 207 to 186 units, which equates to 10.63 units per acre versus the 11.62 previously. And this is well within the range of the medium-density residential area. This is a 10% reduction in the number of units. Another concern previously was impervious area. By removing the one building, you can see on the second image that they're removing a 21-unit building from the east side of the property. That'll be a reduction of 37,000 square feet of impervious area. That building had been in the wetland, so that'll be less impact to the wetland area. In association with this change, there'll also be a removal of about 17,000 square feet of pavement. So this is reducing the impervious area. Another question was, the concern was the wetland impact. By removing that building and associated parking, the impacted wetland area will reduce, reduced from 1.87 acres to 1.05 acres, which is a 44% reduction in the impacted area. Of the 105 acres that are left, approximately 7.5 acres, or 71% will be returned to open space. So while that is impacted, in the end, that area will be open space, green space, and be able to be used for stormwater quality and to also reduce siltation to the downstream areas. They've also added some amenities. There's a playground they're going to put on that site now next to, you'll see the one building on the north side of the big parking area. There's a playground there, and they're also including a dog park on the building. And you'll notice that from the previous example that around the back of the building, that they're removing all that parking that's behind that building. That building then will front on that green space. And then screening, they're proposing to use a continuous screen along the west side. They mentioned using white pines and viburnum as a mixture to provide a good screen between the Winding Ridge Estates and this development. The landscape plan will be presented and reviewed with the site plan proposal that you will see. And just a reminder, this is what the proposed project, a rendering of what that project is. And then we've, there'd been requests to see some of the other projects that the developer has done, and they sent photos of three other developments, two in Utah and one in the Fort Worth, Texas metropolitan area. First one is in Vernal, Utah, which is in the mid-central portion towards Colorado. And you can see then these apartments, the color and the layout. A second one they have is in St. George, Utah, which is down at the Nevada border, so they're a little more of a southwest adobe type of color. And then the third one in Burlington, Texas, which is the Fort Worth subdivision. This is more similar to what they're proposing, and this was an infill site between existing apartments and the railway, railroad crossings. So with that, I'll be happy to answer more questions if you have them.
All right. Thank you, Tom. And that was for agenda items three and four.
Okay. Okay, I guess then we'll go on, make the recommendation. The, there were, the comments on their revised master plan, the subdivision code, we looked into, it does allow for a reduction in development standards to preserve and protect sensitive areas. And so there'd been some question about, could parking possibly be reduced to lessen the impact on the flood plains or the wetland areas? Through a special development area designation, they can reduce those requirements as part of the subdivision plat. So at this point, until the subdivision comes in, it would be part of that development agreement. We met with them and sort of come to an agreement that because of the one-unit apartments typically may not have two residents, that the parking requirements be reduced to 1.25 spaces per unit. There's no reduction to the two-bedroom or three-bedroom units or to the visitor parking requirements. But by doing this, we were able to come up with a reduction, and that's shown on the site plan, an approximate reduction of about 40 to 50 spaces. Then that would allow for a reduction to, again, to more the impervious surface area and would provide additional open space near the stream corridor. They did, the other two comments previously, they did provide a master plan on January 7th, and this was to the comments in the staff report. They have connected the 33-unit buildings to the trail along Lake Ridge Drive, and so just as a reference for that. It doesn't look like it's going back.
Yeah, it's not.
Okay. That's the one there.
I think you can.
Okay, well, we'll just go forward. And then they provided a direct connection from those three buildings on the southwest side to the playground, dog park, and open space area. So that was a concern before. Those garages had sort of blocked easy access to the site. So for the rezoning, the recommendation, we recommend approval of RZ 24-003, a request to rezone the 2.68 acres located south of First Street and east of Winding Ridge Estates to, from Agriculture District to RP Plan Residence District, subject to the technical comments that were in the original staff report, that a subdivision will be required to divide the RP portion of the property from the A1 portion to the north, and then combine it with the RP property that's currently zoned. An access easement plat agreement will need to be prepared and agreed upon for the area where the extension of Lake Ridge Drive is to be extended before the rezoning can be set for a public hearing at City Council. And then finally, a final draft of a development procedures agreement will be required, including provisions for the construction of Lake Ridge Drive. If the request for the special development area is granted, then those terms will be included in that development procedures agreement. And again, all these will have to be done before this can go to City Council. And then a recommendation on the RP district plan, we recommend approval of MP 24-004X, an amendment to the RP master plan for the Meadow Ridge development, subject to the approval of the rezoning request for the six-point, 2.68 acres from Agriculture to RP Plan District, and compliance with the technical comments that are noted in the staff report, which a lot of those were, we have mentioned with this first one, as well as things noted in the staff report, and then the approval of that special development area that will allow parking to be reduced to eliminate 68 parking spaces and unnecessary paved areas. And that'll focus more, be able to focus more on preserving the stream corridor wetland area and to improve the pedestrian connections.
All right. Thank you very much. Does the commission have any questions for staff?
I have a question. I'm not sure if it's for staff or the developer or the petitioner. The, the parking requirements and what's left, does that include, do garages count towards the parking?
Yeah, garages do count for parking.
Thank you. Okay.
And my, my question is, so if you eliminate that extra parking spot, is there any concern around overflow parking if, if they do have two people with a car? Where are they going to put their car?
Well, I guess the question is when they're rented, and even some of the two-bedroom apartments may only have one, one person living in them. So this goes back to looking at statistics and probability, but it's unlikely that all of those spaces would at any time be occupied by a car. And that's kind of what we're looking at. And a lot of other places have reduced number of parking for, that are based upon bedroom counts. And so a one-bedroom would only have- And so a one-bedroom would only have one requirement. We currently require two, so this would theoretically probably balance itself out.
And is there any, was there any reason just to reduce the density by 10%?
That's what they proposed to do because there had been concerns before voiced that the density was maybe a little too high. And in this case, to be able to preserve more of the wetland, it was removing a building in the parking area associated, because if the building is gone, the parking area wouldn't be necessary.
I think it was parking, but also just traffic concerns about the number of people. So, thank you.
I also have a question, potentially for city staff or the developer. The addition of the direct connection to the dog park and playground through the garage. Now, building, it's, it was called out as Building 101, the southwestmost 33-unit building. Would their rear access, building accesses tie into that access, or would they be expected to walk around?
When, when we review the site plan, we'll look at connectivity from building, from the buildings and things like that. This is primarily because that was proposed as amenity space. We didn't want people to have to go to either end of that parking lot to be able to get around them, so they had provided a, a connection directly across there and adjusted the garages.
All right. Thank you. Any more questions? All right. Is the petitioner here tonight would like to come up and speak to this item, please?
Good evening, Commissioners.
Name?
I'm Facker Morley.
Yeah.
I'm the, I'm the applicant. If you have questions for me, I'd love to, love to have it. If you want to hear some background from me and our company, we'd love to give it. But we've been owners of this for about 20 or so years now, and that's even before my time with, with our, our company. We're a family-run business, and so my dad has owned this for, for 20 some odd years now. And then it was given to me to kind of hopefully shepherd through. But we've worked extensively with Karen and Thomas, especially over the past couple, month and a half or what, since we met last. You see the results of, of the things that we've done in trying to address the concerns due to density, wetlands, impervious surface, as well as the screening. And, and so to the point of parking, yeah, we tried to kill two birds with one stone there in removing density where it was sitting on wetlands, which would allow us to remove parking. That was what we chose to, to eliminate that there. But I'm happy to field any other questions or field them as they come.
Okay. Any questions at this point? Okay. Thank you very much. At this point, I'm going to open it up to the public for anyone that would like to come up and comment about this, the plan, and of course, any other changes to it. Just come up to the microphone and name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Tanner Ticken. I live in 218 Winding Ridge Road. From the Winding Ridge neighborhood, our primary concern previously, it was the density. And now we appreciate it is a very select reduction in the, the new density proposal, but that 10% reduction is, is, is not going to be satisfying any of the Winding Ridge residents. I mean, I want to give a, some comparison, and we are talking about still an order of magnitude increase in the density from Winding Ridge to do this neighboring development. But rather, I would like to give you another reference point. It is very, very relevant, relevant reference point. This development, this proposed development is on directly bordering east of the Winding Ridge neighborhood. Okay. In 2015, there was another request made on the, on the area on bordering directly south of the Winding Ridge neighborhood. And it was Pheasant Hollow, Third Edition. And it was proposed in October, it was approved in October 2015, October 19. And at that time, there wasn't any of this commotion or any of this from the neighborhood. Winding Ridge neighborhood did not oppose it, and it was a directly bordering the Winding Ridge, but yet there wasn't any opposition. The reason is, and that development, Pheasant Hollow, Third Edition, was very comparable in size to this, to this proposed development. It was 15-acre. It was directly south of the Winding Ridge. It was 15-acre slat, lot, but the, but the residential density was simply just, was just 3.8. I mean, we are talking about, in, in this proposed development, we are talking about more than an order of magnitude residential density difference, but in, in that one, and it was just 3.8. And there was no opposition from the Winding Ridge neighborhood residents at that time because it was an acceptable transition from a low residential density to 3.8. It was acceptable. There wasn't any of this fanfare, and I mean, if you look at right now, there is still, you are seeing a lot of still residents are still here, but we are, because this order of magnitude residential density increase is still ridiculously high. So I just wanted to point that one out. If I printed the copies of the October 19, 2015 City Council meeting minutes highlighting all this, and I have enough copies, I don't know the procedure. I can give it to the council, the city, the, the members of the planning committee if you want.
Yeah, you can give it, give it to staff, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
And I have one copy for the developer, if developer is interested.
Thank you very much. All right. Thank you. Does anyone else here tonight would like to come up and speak? Name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, I'm Attorney Corey Lorenzen. My office address is 726 West Fourth Street in Waterloo, and I'm here to represent the Shaws who live at 412 Winding Ridge Road in Cedar Falls. You may recall, I came and spoke at the November meeting and addressed primarily the density issues and concerns about the density issues. I requested that the plan be rejected and that new plans be submitted that, that deal with some of the density issues, talking about a larger buffer than the 35-foot buffer, asking for, for addressing screening issues, and also looking for more of a transition from, from a single-family into a medium density, recommending things like twin homes, townhouses, those sorts of things. After about a month and a half, I see this new plan here that really doesn't address any of the issues that, that I raised during the November 20 meeting. There was one building, it was of 21 units, that was removed along with some, some parking, but it's on the opposite side of the project from the Winding Ridge. The, the amount of units up against the Winding Ridge division, and I know I, and I'm going to repeat them again tonight, but I, I gave you a lot of statistics on, on the density next to Winding Ridge, and that hasn't changed with this new plan. And also, to the best of my knowledge, during that month and a half timeframe, I could be wrong on this, but to the best of my knowledge, not a single resident of Winding Ridge was talked about, or talked to, or, or their input was, was sought out as, as this was revised. If you look at the new plan, as before, it's 17.5 acres. Now there's 186 units, so that does get it down to 10.63 units per acre for the entire development. However, as I indicated previously, there's 2.33 acres in this that is set aside for some commercial development on the north side of this development that isn't factored in. It isn't factored into that there's going to be more added to this project at some point down the road that will increase both traffic and density at some point in time. So if you look at, you take that 2.33 acres out, you, you take the 186 units divided by 15.17 acres, that's 12.26 units per acre, which is more than what is allowed in a medium density. I'll talk about that in a little more detail. If you look at which, what has been my primary concern throughout this, the southwest corner down here, it's about seven and a quarter acres, if my math is correct, and I'm, I'm giving the benefit of the doubt on that, I think it's a little bit lower than that. But about seven and a quarter acres, 153 units on that seven and a quarter acres, which is right up against Winding Ridge Estates. That's 21.1 units per acre, right up against Winding Ridge Estates. That's high density. That's high density. If you take those three buildings in the, in the very southwest corner, there's 99 units on a little less than four acres. That's 125 units per acre. Again, that's one in double the maximum allowed, allowed in the medium density. Why are these, these numbers important? I know the engineer from, from VJ last time indicated that, well, there was a master plan that had higher density that was approved back in the 1990s. These people all bought, subject to that master plan being out there, they needed basically to deal with it. I don't accept that. I know Commissioner Watkins last time indicated that just because something was done back in the 90s doesn't mean that you need to accept it, and, and I agree with Commissioner Watkins on that. I, I believe you guys have a responsibility to look at this project and determine whether it is still appropriate. And there's been one significant change since the 90s, between the 90s and as we sit here today. And that is that in May of 2012, the city adopted a comprehensive plan. And in that comprehensive plan, this property that is, that, that, that the Commission is taking a look at tonight was designated as medium density. Okay? Well, what does medium density mean? If you look at 100, page 147, it's Table 9.1 of the comprehensive plan, medium density is defined. There's multiple bullet points, I'm not going to go over all of them, but says may incorporate a mix of housing types, and then it identifies some: single-family detached, single-family attached, and townhouses. Talks about multifamily, it says limited multifamily development may be permitted with special review and special criteria. Says that, that tend to locate in clusters, but should include linkages to other aspects of the community. There's supposed to be a transition here, some connection with the rest of, of the community. Typical maximum density, maximum density, four to 12 units per acre, typically in the middle of that range. Okay, so 12 is the high end of that range. It's supposed to be in the middle of that, all right? Per the comprehensive plan. Projects at this density may be incorporated in a limited way into single-family neighborhoods. So again, it's limited when it's multifamily. On page 150 of the comprehensive plan, there's a matrix that talks about the connection and transition between, for example, single-family residences and medium density. Okay? Per this ma, matrix, it says the connection between single-family and medium density are basically compatible, but the last sentence says, "Building elements and scale should be consistent with surrounding development." Okay? So, so when I spoke on the 20th of November and indicated that I'd like to see a little more transition, it wasn't wishful thinking at that point in time. It's in the comprehensive plan, that there needs to be a transition. I saw these pictures earlier tonight of the Burleson, Texas, and, and I, I think Mr. Weintraud indicated that that's the one that's going to be closest to it. It's a beautiful development, it's a beautiful building, but that was a huge building. That was a huge building. It's going to be right next to a single-family residential development. That's, that's not a transition, that's not medium density. That's 33 units right up against the, the boundary line, the back boundary line of a single-family residence is not a, a, a transition that complies with this comprehensive plan. I think it is significant that this, that the comprehensive plan has this as medium density, and they've used the entire area of the development to get it under 10 point, I think 10.6 units per acre for the entire development. They're not factoring in that there's going to be some future development for the commercial at some point in time, okay? And they're not factoring in that it's very high density right up against Winding Ridge, and there's no transition there. There's, there's just none. And, and that hasn't changed from, from November 20th to today. At the end of the day, I just ask the Commission to not gloss over the fact that, that this is supposed to be medium density, there is supposed to be pursuant to the comprehensive plan, a transition, there, there is none. We're going from single-family housing to 33 units, right up against a boundary line. So again, I, I'm asking again for the Commission to reject the, the plans and ask for plans to come back that have more of a transition, have more of a buffer, have, have more definition with regard to what the screening is, have more of a transition consistent with what the comprehensive plan has, which, that talks about twin homes, townhomes, single-family housing, those sorts of things. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you very much. Does anyone else that'd like to come up and speak to this item? Name and address or company representing.
Good evening. My name is Pat Gallus. I'm an attorney. I figured I better file, follow the other one. I represent the developer. I first wanted to say thank you for allowing us the chance to continue the last hearing, to meet with city, with the staff, and put our heads together to come up with a revised plan and answer some of the questions and concerns that you folks had, that the staff had, and take, carefully weigh those, those situations. I certainly understand the concerns of, of the folks in Winding Ridge. They are beautiful homes. Beautiful. I don't dispute that. And with all due regard to Mr. Lorenzen's comments, I think what he's doing when he wants to break down the number of units per acre, the code doesn't say dissect every building in every area. This project was done as a whole for the entire parcel. What we're trying to do tonight is amend the master plan and rezone 2.68 acres. Along with that, the benefit that the city is going to receive is the development, construction, and payment for the street running from First Street all the way to the south, south end of the property. And I believe that street will be Lake Ridge. The original plan provided for 14.4 units. We have reduced that to 10.6 units per acre. The other concern that was expressed had to do with the wetland. The building that was removed and the parking that was removed was to specifically address two issues. One is density, and one is the wetland issue. The current plan has only .3 acres that will be impervious. The reason that is significant is because the rest of the wetland area that is affected will be returned to wetland. It will be green space. Wetland mitigation doesn't mean wetland elimination. What has to happen, if you in any way affect a wetland... a wetland, you have to restore it. And, and Dan here will speak to that in, in, in greater detail to the extent it's necessary. But we're not removing wetland except for .3 acres. And it's shown on that, on your, on the plan that's with you. It's the light blue. It's where the, it's where the, it's where the wetland has to be crossed. The rest of it will, will remain green space. And we've got to follow the rules and regulations of the Army Corps of Engineer with regard to anything that has to do with that wetland area. The screening, if, and I hope that some of you have driven out there, I hope all of you have driven out there and been through the neighborhood. There are four houses, if you look at your drawing, there are four houses that will back up to the area to be Yes, here. One, two, three, four.
Mike, can you show that image on the slide, on the?
Slide 11.
Thank you.
Okay, you can see it. Moving from the south to the north along there, there's one, two, three, four properties that butt up to the developed area in Winding Ridge. Or is there, there's five. Okay. I apologize. Five. The apartments do not face them. The garages do not face them. There is screening all along there. And there's currently a large berm between those properties and the property to be developed, at least on the south end. So it's, it's always difficult to, to bring a development into an area that has been developed into, or, or a butts, an area that was developed such as Winding Ridge was. This area has always been deemed, or for a number of years, not always, but, but has been deemed to be multifamily RP. We fit within the medium density qualifications. We're between four and 12. This is a buffer between the area directly east of this development property is commercial. So you go commercial, multifamily, and then the outlier is, is Winding Ridge that was allowed to be put in there. And I, I understand, I understand Commissioner Watkins said, well, just because it was done before doesn't mean we have to accept it now. And I agree with that to some extent. But, but it's within the plan that the city adopted a number of years ago. I know there was concern about traffic before, and we've provided additional information to staff, that the, that the study that was done before is still applicable today based upon the assumptions that were used when the study was done. I, I just want to reiterate that, that it, it's impossible to make everybody happy. If you read the staff report, a lot of thought and a lot of effort has gone into putting this plan together. There is a need for housing in Cedar Falls. There is a need for things that people can afford. This is going to be a market rate complex. The pictures that you have seen are not necessarily what it's going to look like. It will, the, the buildings will look like they fit within the character. If you, if you go back and look at these pictures, it's to meet, the design will be to accommodate what is most aesthetically pleasing. Clearly, they would need to look nice, because my client wants people to move So it, again, this is a difficult process, and you don't, you guys don't have an easy job when you have two proponents come up and 30 opponents that are not in favor of it. But projects like this, that the city needs, is very important. The expense associated with the extension of Lake Ridge Drive is, is also greatly significant to the state of Cedar Falls and the neighboring properties. If you look at the larger view of the property, you've got Thunder Ridge Apartments kitty-corner to what we're proposing to develop, and that density is very high. We've addressed the issue of runoff. We've addressed the issue of wetland restoration, not elimination. We've addressed the issue of density to comply with, with medium density. And in doing so, we've, we've helped mitigate some of the problems with, with the wetland. And unfortunately, we can't please everyone. But this is a project that would greatly benefit the city of Cedar Falls, the citizens. I should point out, I live in Royal Oaks, which is just north of this, this proposed development. I will drive by it daily, and I look forward to it frankly. It's, that area has been in need of development ever since I was a kid in Cedar Falls, more so now than ever. And now the time is right. There's a developer that's willing to step up and provide the infrastructure and provide the sort of service that the city of Cedar Falls needs. So, thank you. And we'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. My plan was, I was going to wait until everybody said their piece, and then we would address their concerns one by one to the extent we could. But I couldn't let Cory go without coming up. So, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Do you guys have any questions for me? Dan Aaron's VJ Engineering, 5301, 5301 Technology Parkway?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public that'd like to come up and speak, please?
Kamyar in Cheyenne, 1703 Washington Street. I don't live in this particular neighborhood, but I care deeply about natural areas of our city. Each place, each community has unique places. A river, a woodlot at the corner of Main and 18, a wetland, a river. And when we accommodate these features, we have, the uniqueness of, of this place, of Cedar Falls. When we accommodate them, it's wonderful. When we ignore them and just plop our plan on top of them, we diminish this community. We don't let people go build in the middle of Cedar River. It's like, there's some, there's some hard realities of a place you have to face. That particular piece of ground has 1.8 acres of wetland in it, and it's non-negotiable. You just can't put, you just got to accommodate that wetland. Our ordinance says so. I have a question for our staff. How could you recommend that this be approved and it ta, it affects one acre of wetland when our wet, when our ordinance says no encroachment on wetlands?
I think part of the answer to that is that while initially it is impacting 1.5 acres of wetland, the area then afterwards, that the actual amount that's going to have pervious area and building is going to be .3 acres. The rest of that will go back to, this, this area was an emergent wetland. 30 years ago, it didn't really exist because of being farmed. So then this will be able for that wetland to continue to, to emerge. And that's, that's, that's what we were looking at. The Army Corps is allowing it to be remediated, which is another, another process. So that was why they've greatly reduced the impact on that area.
Still, the ordinance says there is a wetland there, and we're not supposed to, the proposals that come to the city should not impact the wetland. It, this idea that it's going to only impact 1.05 acres, and then it'll be returned to open space. What does that mean? Open space is not wetland. So, and also, it was in the past, last time we were here, the developers said, this is degraded wetland. They didn't present any evidence or anything, but degraded wetlands, all wetlands in Iowa are degraded severely. There isn't that much high-quality wetland left. These are like tiny pieces of land that's in our city, that we got to protect them. Our own studies say that we got to restore these prairies. We got to enhance them. I don't understand. I just don't understand why we couldn't change the site plan to accommodate these beautiful places that are in our community. They're already open space. They're already taking care of them, taking care of themselves. So that's my concern. I, I, I really think a wetland, just like the Cedar River, is non-negotiable. It's a heritage of our community. We should respect it, and we should simply ask the developer, which I'm glad they've changed their plan, but it looks like they're still encroaching on this wetland. It's, it's non-negotiable. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else from the public to come up to speak?
Jason Maven, 1107 Eagle Ridge Road. First of all, I want to thank everyone for the hard work. Yeah, I appreciate the opportunity to address the concerns, and it's very important, I think, this project in particular. With that said, I'm still concerned about the traffic. I know it's been said a thousand times, but I've been over this many different ways. Given even the reductions in parking spots, for example, per the plan, 292 cars entering First Street at AM peak, 266 at PM peak indicates, indicated for this new development to accommodate, you know, all the, all the vehicles. So as you know, the traffic study that originally was done in May of 2000, it was during COVID and not during school, being in session, which I think is a key element. The, so the study indicates the traffic volumes were not at normal level, but they used an adjustment factor from the Iowa DOT collection on July 10th, 2017, for the intersection of First Street and Oak Park Magnolia Drive. Again, school is not in session during that time. Beyond that, for the last seven years, it doesn't incorporate any of the development off of Union Road or an additional housing and traffic that has increased. Okay? So I haven't, I still haven't seen any recent study that addressed that concern. And when I say the concern, I'm not talking about the width or the capacity of First Street. I'm talking about getting in and on and accessibility from First Street and to get off of First Street primarily. And the reason being, because here again, anecdotally, I invite you to go there. Eagle Ridge Road and First Street or Lake Ridge, and there's benches there. You can sit there at peak hours, 7:30 in the morning and in the evening, and see for yourself. Don't rely on a study. You got eyeballs. You can go there and you can see it for yourself. It, it's already backing up. It's already becoming an issue. Okay? And so that is still a concern of mine, and I just wanted to kind of lay that out there, because I don't think it's been addressed. I mean, there's cars traveling at 45, 50, sometimes even faster down that road right now, and I am worried for my kids, frankly. I am. They're starting to drive. I am concerned about that. I'm concerned about just getting across the street. There's a lot of kids that, you know, go across the street. I see them every day on, whether bikes or walking to school, to Hanson Elementary School, and it's fast. And you got to be on your toes, and we're adding to that problem. And it's not been addressed. And we're citing studies that are well over seven years old and not incorporating any of the changes over the last seven years. And there have been a lot. So with that, ultimately, I encourage you to vote no tonight, because I'm not anti-this development. I want to make that clear. I'm not. But I do think the density and the traffic, I think you need to sharpen your pencil. And I think it needs to be reduced to quite a bit less. And I think there needs to be some more foresight and thought going into this project before it's approved through P&amp;Z to go to a vote. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to get up and speak? Name and address, please.
Atul Patel, 307 Winding Ridge Road. Just couldn't help but comment, make a comment on what has been said about need and wants. I'm here to address need and wants, because I heard that Cedar Falls is in dire need to develop that piece of land. At what cost or how or what is the end goal, we do not know. But to me, that lot is not an eyesore by any means. We are not distressed, or we are not under, like against a wall to develop that thing at any cost right now. What I propose is, yes, there is a need to develop that land, but let's develop it where it makes more sense to the community, to the people that live around and about, and, and to the very people that the city is trying to help with. And what I'm suggesting is, is if there's a need to develop it, I don't mind about it, but let's find a developer, or if they can develop this particular land in a low density or a medium towards the lower density, there's a transit, like very good transition towards the commercial part of that. It's not like we have a big commercial businesses out there. You know, it's still on, on the lower side of the commercial is what we have with a little bit of strip mall and, and of course, you know, there's a Walgreen and, and Fairway. It's not like we have a big giant highways and stuff like that. But if there is absolute need of apartments in Cedar Falls, that is not the only land in Cedar Falls available to develop it. I mean, we, I, I, in fact, a developer is willing to develop these beautiful buildings and however, how many apartments. I urge, there's plenty of land in Cedar Falls. Why, why we are spending time and time and time, you have 20 years to build that thing. Over 20 years, a lot of things has changed.
Please address the chair.
Okay, sorry about that. I mean, it's just coming from them and just, so 20 years, things have changed. And what I'm trying to tell is, we change, we also got to change things around. I'm not against the development. I have plenty of land, as I have said, Cedar Falls is a beautiful place. I understand they own the land down there. They want to develop it the most possible way according to what fits their, their needs. But as far as city of Cedar Falls, I refuse as a citizen to allow people to come from wherever. Even if I am here, I will not allow people to do whatever they want, but against a development that is really not a straight fit. I see this building, it's easy to put it on, but we're going to be seeing that development lifelong. And I'm, I'm just talking in general. I'm not even worried about traffic right now. Everything, what is mattering the most is it's not a right fit in many, many, many ways. And we can keep on talking, arguing, arguing, but if they are not willing to come down to the real number, then what's the meaning of, what's next? I have no idea. But I'm, I'm saying, let them develop into something different. Come up with a plan that fits their development, and then they can take this particular project a mile, two miles. While still in Cedar Falls, we would welcome them with open arms to do that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Someone else like to come up and speak? Yeah, just come to the microphone. Name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Fatia Tukan, 218 Winding Ridge. My point that I want, going to emphasize is not different than that has been issued, pointed out yet, all this that from developer perspectives, from the citizen perspectives who lives over there. Developer wants to maximize the unit density for increase their profit when something, a new development's happening. The citizens or city planners is, have more comprehensive view, how the city has been developed, what kind of the characteristic organic life has been developed over there, and what is the foremost benefit, the culture, the current situation over there. So developer is just high density and 10.7, 10.8 density, and is considered very profitable for them. But when we look at that area, one density- But when we look at that area, one density is one is Winding Ridge and the other area, commercial is as a classified, very small scale, neighbor scale, the commercial area, Walgreen or kind of city small. And only the tender rich apartments is not that high, very high, high, high density. So between those low density and that area, it has to be medium. And all issues density issue, the higher density, the higher problems that is emphasized, like a more demand for the parking, more demand for the transportation, more crowded, more issues. And, but is a changes very smooth, it's not going to be all those the issues that is going to, problems that we are going to face in the, after the development. So it is something that, it has to be like when those planning has been made, comprehensive city planning and then face the stages is open for the development periodically. And when it has to be considered how it has been developed, what is the characteristic, what the citizen input? So how is going to be more organically developed that in the 10 years or 20 years from now is not going to cause all those issues. So that means that medium density, yes, we want to, like lawyers emphasize that Cedar Falls is the housing, affordable housing, we are not against affordable housing. Affordable, affordable housing can be developed in that area with the medium density that will fit organically in that area. So instead of 10.8 density, it could be 3.5 density affordable housing. So it can, can come over there affordable housing. So the most important is not going to be really cause or create any issues for the already developed surrounding areas. So that's the whole point that I want to emphasize from those citizen perspectives, resident perspectives that who are living over there or also as a city planner perspectives. I am myself, my city planner to that, how has to be harmonically developed when the stages are open for the development five years, 10 years or 15 years later, those areas. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come up and speak please?
Peter Re, 30105 North Ridge. I have to say, first of all, I'm a little befuddled by the statement which has been repeated that only .3 acres of wetland is going to be impacted. You know, the, the quality of a wetland is not just the surface of the water, but the surrounding area, which is vital to determining the quality and nature of the wetland. So when I looked at that map, it, it's really hard to see how only .3 acres are going to be impacted. I would just say that that number simply defies credulity. And I did have two questions for the developer. Could you be a little bit more specific on the screening between the neighborhood and the development? You mentioned some trees would be developed. Are they two feet tall, are they 20 feet tall? Will they provide some sound and, and visual barrier? The second question I had was, I think in the initial plan, there were plans to have a business in the northwest corner of the property. Could you be a little bit more specific or elucidate on, on what the plans may be for that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to get up and speak? Name an address please.
Tom Hegel, 328 Winding Ridge Road. I think, you know, listening to all the discussion tonight, I think the one thing that stands out to me is, is the density component again. I appreciate that there was a reduction, but I think the, where I'm, where it hits me is it's more of the perceived density. You know, everything's crammed up against the west side of the property, you know, removing a, a building from the east side of the property. I understand the logic of that, helping out with the wetlands and the impervious surfaces and things, but it doesn't change the perceived density from anyone that's in Winding Ridge. I think the other thing that stands out to me and that's been a consistent point of conversation throughout the four meetings or whatever we're up to now is the idea that this has been planned residential for quite some time. The argument's been made that Winding Ridge should have known what they were getting into. My question is, knowing that, I don't know that it was ever prudent planning, knowing that the RP zone existed, why did, why did P&amp;Z and the city allow Winding Ridge to become a thing? Is it, is that something that was a mistake that was made 20 some odd years ago? And I feel like allowing this to go through in the manner that we're talking about right now is another mistake. And at some point, we've got to stand up and, and be accountable for the things that we're doing. You know, I think with that being said, I would like to encourage the commissioners to reject this. I think you can use your discretion and, you know, we can come up with a better plan. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to come up? Otherwise, I'd, I do want to ask the developer to come up and speak again, so.
Cameron Lee, 220 Winding Ridge Road. On the plans that we keep seeing over and over again, I'm the Lee, so I'm in the very bottom corner of this entire property. So the three giant buildings are, you know, pretty much adjacent to my property. My concern there, and again, I know you guys have received numerous invitations to come and hang out with all of us. I will extend you another one. Come sit on my back porch with me. I have the highest level of kind of the, the berming that was spoken about is in my, is in my property. And basically from my, from my deck, which is probably, let's call it four feet off the ground, the berm extends probably another six feet above me. So now we're going to build a three-story apartment on top of that. There is no size fence that I probably can afford that is going to keep anybody in those 99 units that will be hanging out from getting to kind of watch my backyard. It's not really why I bought the property for half a million dollars a few years ago. I bought it because it provided the tranquility and the privacy for, for my children, for my pets. You know, we, we enjoy, you know, I'm going to be sad, there's, gosh, probably 10 deer that roll through my property every single day. And, you know, we'll throw carrots out there and they'll just destroy them all on the way through. And we see them all the time, they'll be gone. There, there was nowhere for them to hang out anymore. So, you know, I would ask that, you know, density has obviously been discussed at nauseam. I don't want to keep talking about it and I'm sure you guys, you get the gist. You know, I, I do think that there, there is some validity to, you know, density within certain space. You know, I understand kind of the guidelines and all the math that goes into, to how much you can have, but there does need some logic and kind of dealing with reality in terms of how, how we're placing people in certain spots. I, I do have a lot of questions around the, the screening component. You know, if they plant four-foot trees all along that line, man, 25 years from now, that's going to be fantastic. Hopefully I'm still alive to see full-grown trees in my backyard. Maybe I won't be, but if we're talking about screening, I really think we need to be looking at what that looks like. I would really love to see that kind of buffer zone between the two communities pushed even further back so that we can at least maintain some of that, you know, environment and, and the visual tranquility that we, we purchased, you know, a number of years ago. So hopefully, you know, I, I think we're, you know, it was great to see the developer take some steps i- in the right direction in terms of addressing some of these concerns. I think there's still some work to do here. Again, I'm not opposed to something being built there. I understand, you know, from a developer's perspective, they bought the land, they have plans. You know, this is a, this is a for-profit company, they're not running a charity and they're looking to get a return on the investment they've made on this land. And, and, you know, it's great that they're willing to invest even more to, to kind of bring something to fruition here. But, you know, it, it does seem a bit jarring. If, if a house went on sale in Winding Ridge right now, you probably couldn't buy it for less than three-quarters of a million dollars. And we're going to stick some fairly high-dense apartments right next door. That, that doesn't feel transitioned to me. So I'll leave it to your good judgment. I hope we'll kind of continue this process of working on the plan and trying to find a plan that makes more sense for both the community at large and Cedar Falls as a whole. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. I do want to point out that we cannot come sit on your patio and watch. The ex parte laws don't allow that, that any discussion that we have needs to be in a public forum like this, so it's on the record. So is anyone else like to come up and speak? Can I have the developer come up and address any questions?
Do I, do you want me to restate my name?
Yes, please.
Packer Morley. I am the applicant. And I, I won't go over all of the things that have happened in my community where I live. I think we all experience things when we live in a community, things that we plan to have happen, things we didn't plan to have happen. I just had a, a brand-new high school built right next to my, my house and the entrance is just a block down the street from my driveway. So it's been an adjustment, but we need education. So I have to adapt and we have to adjust. I also have a brand-new 16-year-old kid who has a, who just is learning to drive as well. So I can sympathize with, with all of that as well. All of these things are reality and I'm not naive to the fact that it's not a reality. I do want to point out just a couple of things. The, and Dan could speak much more intelligently on it, but these wetlands that we are talking about have been proven, or we've been able to prove over the course of several years, that a big vast majority of them are man-made, coming from seeping sewage lines. So I do understand preserving wetlands. And that is the reason why these were deemed low, low-quality wetlands is because they were man-made and self-inflicted. So the quality definitely needs to be considered here. And I, and I do understand the, you know, when he's looking, when we're looking at the map, there's a lot of lines, a lot of shaded areas on those, on those, on those maps. Point three acres will be crossed and will be paved, that is, that is a fact and yes, that, they will go over that. The other ones, we are under strict, and, and we still by doing so, are under strict deservance of the Army Corps of Engineers. They don't like giving out permits and when they give out permits, they, they keep a close eye on you. So when we talk about green space and returning it and not eliminating wetlands, we are going to, yes, we have to grade them so that our water will flow down into the wetlands to catch them, but we have to keep them open and it's to our benefit because we want people to live there, to make them look good and pretty. And the most natural state is usually the prettiest state, so we'll leave them as naturally as we can. But there is some obvious, if you've been out to the site, there is some obvious grading that needs to take place in order for these things to, the water to flow appropriately and not flow into anybody's yard or into, into the adjacent property as well. I would also like to note that the buffer that's been talked about, I'll, I'll have Dan set up in just a second and mention that the bushes were mentioned by Thomas that we're, we're looking at using previously in his opening statement, but I can have him go over those again. But the high point that we're talking about, that then, that the last gentleman that stood up, his backyard does come to that and his, his deck does sit just a little bit below that, but our building does not sit on top of the, top of that. It sits on the fall side of the other side of that. So it's not three stories looking into his backyard. But, because I, I definitely would have same, the same problems with that as well. But overall, I do believe that we do own this piece of property, which I believe provides merit. The piece of property is zoned a certain way and we have done in working in conjunction and collaboration with the city to prepare a project that fits within the zoning standards and ordinances that are permitted under that zone. If you don't mind, I'll have Dan come up and address more of the screening issue, unless you have more questions for me that you'd like me to address.
No, I think we're good. Thank you.
No problem.
So as far as the screening goes, we've been working with a local landscaper here and we've got a couple of different options. These would include some very large white pine trees with a smaller dogwood or viburnum underneath. We did provide some pictures to staff of what, what these would look like. But obviously this has been gotten pretty long, so that wasn't included, I don't think, in the, in the slideshow. But we have been providing them with that and we have been working with a landscape architect on this. The issue is we need to get this rezoned so that we can have that landscape architect in a plan in place and, and do the plans. But as far as that berm goes, I'm not going to keep beating on that. There is a high point there right at the, about the property line that does help. But for the, for the majority of these buildings, they are lower than the houses in Winding Ridge. From what I could tell from our preliminary plans, none of the floor elevations, main floor elevations of these buildings would be higher and the majority would be much, much lower. Some of those houses are three stories and, and these would be three-story buildings. So what I'm hearing is a lot of not in my backyard and, and we'd like you to get down to this number as far as density goes. I've heard a couple of different numbers. We've been working very closely with staff to come up with this, to come up with this plan and making adjustments up till just this morning, we were making adjustments on this plan to try to get this to a place that we feel meets every single ordinance. I want to touch on the wetlands just a little bit, add a little context to that. There was a full study done, a couple of them actually, tests run. I won't go back through it all because I think ad nauseam was used and I think we're getting there. When Wendell was here presenting this clear back last year, he showed a slideshow of how these wetland areas through multiple studies have shrunk as the city's storms, sanitary sewer has been replaced through there. It was found that they were leaking, as they were repaired, the wetland shrunk. Not all of that has been repaired. We know that there was seepage from those because there was caffeine found in there, as you all know. As to the 0.3 acres, yes, on the plan, we have 1.05, 3 acres of disturbed. We'll have to work with the Corps if this were to get approved at some point to update our plan with them because as was said, they'll be watching this and they need to have final plans before construction can start. Now, as to the .3 acres, what I was getting at there was all but .3 acres of the disturbed area of the wetlands will not be, will not be impervious, will not be concrete, is what I'm saying. So the rest of that will be returned to green space, landscaped area, whatnot. The majority of this one acre that's being disturbed is, is, is only grading and has to create the detention basins that are required by ordinance that will take this runoff from these disturbed areas, from this impervious area and require that to stay on-site and allow toxins, particulates, all of that to filter out before it can leave the site. It's a, it's, it's, it's a water quality improvement, it is the requirement by the city on any site you see. That's, that's, that's what detention is. I guess with that, I'll take any questions. If there could be anymore.
Yeah, is there any for him right now?
You'd mentioned that there's a, or someone had mentioned that there's a berm that goes up to a certain point north from the south. Can that berm be extended to?
Berm may not be the correct word for it. It's, it's, it's a natural high point through there. The back of that Mr. Lee's lot there slopes up to about the property line in there. And that'll be that high point about where that, where that, I want to say setback, where that buffer is. And that's kind of the high point and from there, that all slopes down. So that, those trees, that screening would all be planted basically along there. Now, as that moves to the north, it kind of flattens out and it's kind of a, kind of a drainage path for some of the, some of the lots lower down. That said, we're trying to rezone. We haven't completed the grading, the plans because we're just not there yet. There's no reason to complete construction plans until you know. know that you'll be able to construct something. So that's not all dialed in. Obviously, we'd like to have as much separation as possible. The 35 buffer was extended through conversations with staff. I believe the first iteration of this was, was 25. The 35 is not required. It was, it was added to, to try to ease concerns. And I guess my, my main concern here is, coming to these meetings, is it just, you know, you, we try to give as much as you can and, and, and address all these issues, and I don't, I don't see any, any end to it until, until it's just single-family housing at this point. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much. I'll bring that back to commission for discussion. This has been an interesting debate in the last four meetings. I will give credit to the developer for coming back with changes that we had requested. I appreciate that. I think addressing the wetlands is, is good, and, and I do understand that developing that is going to improve the water quality going downstream, and I know there's been a complaint by that neighborhood of the water coming there, so I see that as a positive. The density bringing down is appreciated. I was hoping for it to be more, but I do understand that, that does fit the zoning in there, and I understand what the objective of the developer is. So, I, I am happy with the changes, and I, and I could see supporting this moving forward, even though I know that won't make everyone happy.
I'd like to, just for clarification, double-check exactly on the process of everything. I've been on the commission here for a little over a year now, but it's still kind of, you know, can't follow it all the time. So, right now, we're asking to rezone, and then we're also asking for the master plan amendment. Can you remind me of what the future steps would be then for other concerns about density or about trees or about the other pieces? I, I want to say that typically comes later in the process. Am I correct on that?
In order to do the RP plan, you have to provide a fairly detailed concept. But again, it's a concept saying that it looks like we can put these items there. When they get ready to do a detailed site plan, then they will, they will go through and check it. Some things, they may have to adjust, but that would come back to you. The rezoning is for that one parcel, whether it makes sense for that small piece to become part of the overall RP. And if it does, as, because that's being rezoned, it has to have that RP plan accompanying it, which is what we're looking at right now. There'll still have to be the subdivision to take care of some of those other issues. You know, we'll be dealing with the utilities, the, the access to the properties. Right now, what we're rezoning doesn't have access, so that's got to be, something has to be in place, the Neesman Agreement, or whether it's built, before the council will be able to approve that zoning change. Did that?
So, so I think Tom's right. Maybe just a step-by-step summary. So, this is the, the first step to rezone and to amend the master plan. The next step, if that's approved, they would probably be preparing a subdivision plat to sort of combine those, and they're going to have to build the road, so the road has to be platted, that sort of thing. So, probably the preliminary plat's the next step in that. And then after that, and maybe they can do that concurrently, but a detailed site plan would have to be approved. So, all of those things would come back through P&amp;Z and council.
And yet, the, we would probably owe it to the developer for them to have a pretty good idea of if we would expect large-scale changes to the density, which is, seems to be the biggest conflict with, with the proposal here. We, we, we don't want to just leave that up for the future typically. That should be something, if we're going to approve this, we need to kind of have a general okay with the proposed density and the, the plan as it's written. Would that be correct?
Right. So, what, what's being proposed, you're being asked to approve the concepts that's being proposed. If there were going to be significant changes by the developer, they would have to come back for another amendment to the master plan again.
Thank you. I, I do agree with Commissioner Hartley that, that I, I had a large concern about the wetlands. I appreciate the developer has mostly addressed that. I think in an ideal world, you know, you look at the slot, the wetland kind of cuts right across the middle of it. It's next impossible to completely leave it alone. I think we can't have huge buffer ships. I completely understand where, where the neighbors are coming from as well. You know, the concept of a three, three-story building right next door is, is intimidating, frankly, and we do need to think about what's best for the city of Cedar Falls and, and the land that we have and the spaces that we do have without necessarily pushing all apartment complexes into little areas. I think that's something that, to me, when we talk about the RP zone and, and what the purpose of it is, it is to intersperse across the, the community where different types of, of housing are, and not have it be where all the apartments have to be in one little area, or all the, this, this area up here is all the really nice big lots or anything like that. So, I wish we could have a best-of-everything scenario, but we're probably not going to. So, I do think this, this development as it is, does make sense as well.
My, my only comment would be, I think that, that there could be some improvement on the density. It still seems like it's awfully dense, and I do agree that there's a goal of inter-dispersing, but it seems like a, you know, a, a significant difference between the single-family homes, the size of the parcels, et cetera, and then the density that they're going to be facing. So, my, my two cents would be to go back to the, to the, see if we can do something more about the density. I do agree that they've done a lot about the wetlands, but, you know, at the last meeting around this, I think there was a, a statement that all of the issues would be, would be addressed. And granted, no one, I think this is one of the situations, no one's going to be really happy, no matter where this lands, but I still think there's some room for compromise to address the concerns that the landowners that live next to this have.
My comments, if you guys can hear me.
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. I'd like to thank the developer and the engineers and the city staff. I think that you guys worked really hard to get to the point where we're at now, to address a lot of the concerns that the public has. The density, to me, in my opinion, the density factor goes back to mostly the traffic, and I think the one piece of the puzzle, at least in my opinion, that we're missing is an updated traffic study. And in my opinion, I, I don't think we, I can support this without that, and I think that piece is the only thing that's kind of missing. And with that, that might, and, and again, this is just my opinion, address the density concerns that they have, because obviously, the applicant is within their rights, but I think that those sort of pieces come together, and if we had that information, then I would feel more comfortable approving this. And so, I guess that's, that's my opinion, that if we had an updated traffic study, that might be the last piece of this that we have said we've put on our due diligence to seeing this through. So, that's where I stand.
There was something in the packet about that. Could you guys speak to how the company did that is?
So, I spoke with the company that did the traffic study. They went ahead and went back through the DOT's latest traffic counts, and they did provide a letter that was provided to staff, and I think was in the packet. But after talking with him, he basically said that his findings, after looking at the DOT's latest traffic counts from this area, is that they were overly conservative when they applied their corrections for, for 2020, and that the traffic counters were, traffic counts, current traffic counts were quite a bit lower than what their projections were. They completely reaffirmed their findings, and his statement to me was that it was overly conservative, in his opinion.
And that methodology was proven in other meetings as well?
He stood behind his methodology, and that's all this firm does all over the Midwest, is, is do traffic counts.
Even with those COVID numbers in other communities.
Exactly. Yep. We talked about it quite a bit, just because I was kind of interested in, and he went on, and he said a lot of it was actually, they ended up, the corrections they applied were, ended up being more conservative in, in a lot of areas. So, we did get him to reaffirm that.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion, comments?
I would agree. I think that this is, I mean, obviously, we've been discussing this for multiple meetings, and it's hard, because I just don't think we're going to please everybody, but I think one concern that was mainly brought up in the beginning of this project was conserving the wetlands, and I do greatly appreciate that the developer has gone back and revised the plan to scale back the number of buildings while we're still, we have a very small portion that will be over that wetland. I do appreciate that they made a scale back to try to accommodate some of that and let those wetlands just be, essentially. I do think that that also helped to address some of the density concerns. With that said, though, I know that people are concerned about the number of buildings over on the west side. I think that it's hard, because we could try to space that out, but then you're going over wetlands. So, I think that this was a nice way for us to try to address the wetland issue, but then also give regard to density concerns. So, it's so difficult, because I know that this still is not pleasing everybody in the room, and I don't think any of us sitting up here want to push something forward that obviously upsets people in the community, but I do greatly appreciate the changes that the developer has made. They very much meet the guidelines that are within the zone, and I think even though I would love to see an updated traffic study as well, I do have some questions there. Yeah, I could, I could see this being something I could support moving forward as well.
I have a question regarding the SDA. If, if we want that to be implemented, that's, we need to incorporate that now into our motion?
Yeah, I think we have written it into the recommendation that you would recommend. If it's going to be considered a special development area, because it has sensitive features on it, it takes the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to consider it a SDA, and you'd recommend that to the council, so that we could adjust the underlying zoning standards accordingly.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
Nope.
Yeah, I don't, it's, we've closed it to the public already, so. He's the developer answering the questions, though. I'd allow one person to come up and speak. Do you want to come up? You got to speak at the microphone, please. Name and address again.
Tom Nagel, 328 Winding Ridge Road. Just back to the traffic study, the one thing I would like to, I mean, they didn't count any pedestrians. Lot of kids cross that road. My kids crossed that road multiple times during peak hours with school stuff, and I think that's something that should be considered for safety, and it's definitely an impact when somebody hits that walk button, you know? Hopefully, people are slowing down and all the things, but zero pedestrians were counted during the traffic study, and obviously, it was, took place when school was not in session, so, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
I have a question. Are we going to have one motion for two items or for?
No, we'll do a motion for the first item and then a motion for the second item. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. No more discussion. I would move to approve the item three, the rezoning of the 2.68 acres. That's my motion.
I'd second.
We have a motion and a second. We'd need a roll call. Vote on that, please.
Albrehasky?
Aye.
Gribovich?
Aye.
Hartley?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Sorenson?
Aye.
Stahlnecker?
Aye.
Watkins?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries.
Okay, thank you. The next item is number four, the RP District Master Plan Amendment. I will move to approve that, including the suggestion for the SDA.
And I would second that.
Albrehasky?
Aye.
Gribovich?
Nay.
Hartley?
Aye.
Henderson?
Nay.
Johnson?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Sorenson?
Aye.
Stahlnecker?
Aye.
Watkins?
Nay.
That motion carries.
And this will go on to city council. So, everyone here can go to city council and discuss that with them as far as moving forward. So, thank you very much for coming out tonight. All right. We're going to move on, let the room clear out a little, so we can. Have it quiet. All right. We're going to move on to item number five of old business, and this is rezoning of a property from A1 Agriculture to PC2 Planned Commercial District. And tonight, Michelle has this. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. And as mentioned, the property is in the northeast corner of the intersection of Highway 20 and Hudson Road, and also south of Ridge, West Ridgeway Avenue. We've talked about the criteria for rezoning, and as mentioned in the staff report, the proposal does meet the criteria for rezoning, and tonight, we're just, as part of the rezoning, the city is proposing to rezone this as PC2, and it does require a master plan for rezoning. And the city did adopt a master plan for this parcel in 2019. In my last presentation, we went over how the proposal meets this master plan and how the two, the zoning of the PC2 and, well, as well as the Highway 20 Commercial Corridor Overlay District complements that rezoning. I have a presentation available, if you have any questions on those. There has been one update since we met last, and the city is now proposing to have the center property. It was decided last week that instead of having this development in two phases, they're going to have the development in one phase, and the large middle lot will be developed as 25 acres, or it could be in the future replatted. This is a unique subdivision, since it's going to have two roundabouts connecting the subdivision, and it's part of the entry to the city, so they'll have entry, gateway, entrance. The streets will be a little bit wider, and I'm just really summarizing now for time's sake, so feel free to interrupt me, and I'm available for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Is there any questions for staff?
And I forgot to mention that we have, Tom is better here, the principal planner, to answer any engineering questions.
Okay. The petitioner is the city. So, is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item? Okay. Any discussion, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Can I get a roll call vote on that, please?
Albrehasky?
Aye.
Gribovich?
Aye.
Hartley?
Aye.
Henderson?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Moser?
Aye.
Sorenson?
Aye.
Stahlnecker?
Aye.
Watkins?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. That moves us on to new business, and number six is a Creekside Business Park Preliminary Plat, the northeast corner of Interchange Highway 20 with Hudson Road. And I take it, Michelle, you have this one also?
I do. I do. So, as you saw, the rezoning and the master plan, the city is now moving forward as well as to do. forward, as well as to do, to create the preliminary, a request for a preliminary plat for the property. The city is proposing 10 lots, ranging from two and a half acres to 25 acres. The vision plan for this area, the master plan for this area, has a recommendation of at least two acre lots. There will be one lot that will be for stormwater and a park, and having a trail through that. More information of that and how it's designed will be in the construction plans. And City Council will have to approve that design. As part of a preliminary plat, we look at the street connections. And next side. And this is next to the city limits on the south. And Hudson Road is along the west boundary. So there's no connections there because of the proximity of this in the city. The city is proposing a stubout to the property to the east, if something ever happens to, for that to be redeveloped. And then the connections to the north will be through the roundabouts. As already mentioned, there will be a lot, Outlet A, for a stormwater facility. And it will be designed to manage the stormwater for the entire subdivision at site plan review, which will go through planning and zoning and City Council. Stormwater will be evaluated as well. This stormwater management will, the vision to have wetland features, as well as that public park. And I conclude with a recommendation that staff recommends gathering public comments. And then we will schedule another meeting on the 22nd of January. So I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for staff? I mean, this makes sense to me, pretty straightforward, a place to start to get this going. I'd love to see that developed and have a nice show, you know, grand entrance into Cedar Falls, have a nice development there would be nice.
Agreed.
Okay. Otherwise, we're just moving this conversation on to January 22, correct?
Correct.
Yep, okay. All right. Well, if that ends that discussion, is there any commission updates?
Michelle has one update for you tonight.
I do. The city is working on a Parks master plan. And I do have a slide for it. We are gathering public comments and wanting your input. There's two ways of providing input. If you go to the city's website, under www.cedarfalls.com, under recent news, you'll see a link to our Your City, Your Parks page. And on that has a link to our survey. And we also have a link to Social Pinpoint. Social Pinpoint is a map where you can put by comments, or read other people's comments, as well as vote if you like that comment or not, or provide another comment on top of that comment. We would just want to get the word out and get as many people involved in that as possible.
Thank you.
And I do have posters, if you want to take one and post it somewhere.
All right, thank you. Yes, and I agree. I've been to the site. It's, it's a great tool. I love the interactive map on there. And the survey's easy. I encourage everyone to, please ask your friends to take the survey, so we know what direction to go, so. All right, so I would, if that ends that, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we are adjourned. Have a great evening. Thank you.